Roll call of attendance?
Done.
We need a motion to approve the agenda, and I understand there will be an amendment to it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to amend the agenda?
I thought we would have a discussion. Will we have a discussion after we have the second?
All right. I said all in favor say aye. They all said aye at the approval of the agenda.
Except me.
Except you. Let's back that up. We have a motion and a second now. Any discussion?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to under item four, add D superintendent's search update.
Second.
Volunteer of the amended agenda?
Aye.
Approved. Discussion items tonight, this is a study session. Kathy will talk about wellness at the high school.
Thank you, members of the board, Superintendent Larson. Jody Tester has joined me tonight to talk about our social emotional wellness and the[70.75][70.75]interventions that we have in place at the high school. There we go. So we take a look at our current reality, and as we look at the things that are affecting our students, probably one of the most influential components is the social media and the technology piece, and how that is something that our students really struggle on the best use of that. We have outside professional support. We see students with chemical abuse, homelessness, disenfranchised youth. When we look at mental health, it is connected to abuse, aggression, anxiety, defiant behaviors, denial, depression, eating disorders, isolation, suicidal ideation, trauma, and truancy and school avoidance. And I would say that our number one challenge at the high school is truancy and school avoidance attendance issues. If we look at the types of interventions we have at the high school, we put them into three categories. Universal, which would be tier one for all students. Pre-intervention, which is tier two for our students that are struggling. And then tier three, individualized for our IEP students. When we look at the staff members that are supporting these different tiers, for the universal, tier one, all of our staff are involved in helping our students be successful. When we look at the pre-intervention, we include administration, behavior specialists, mental health specialists, our nurses, school counselors, school psychologists, 504 plan managers, and we have co-located services, which mean that outside organizations have received grants to be in our building. Right now, we have Canvas Health one day a week. We have Family Means two and a half to three days a week. Hazleton Betty Ford has a therapist on one day a week, and we also contract out with Youth Service Bureau in Washington County, Stillwater. Through our individual education plan, students, again, we have our administration, behavior specialist, mental health specialist, our paraprofessionals, our school counselors, psychologists, special education staff, 916 consultation, and again, our co-located services. If there's ever questions on any of this, please feel free to ask at any time. So now we'll start with our universal interventions, and this is for all students and all families. So all of our families and students have access to administration, our behavior intervention specialist, which is Jody, and she is part-time, a behavior intervention specialist at the high school, our counseling staff, our mental health specialist, who also spends part of his time at the high school, and then he is in other buildings too, and the entire staff. There's the offices, the co-located services, the counseling office, health office. Our lunch and learn program was developed to help reduce anxiety in our students. We have a multipurpose intervention room. You may have heard of it as the WECs Lab. That's the name that it was when it was work experience, and we just have not changed the name because it works well. Speakers and presentations on safety, equity, and grade level meetings. We have study strategies curriculum that Jody can speak to a little bit. She is one of our teachers that works with our study strategy students. And then we have brought on a Zephyr Link crew this year to help our students coming into ninth grade transition into the high school. Additional universal interventions, every student in grade nine meets with their counselor to have an individualized four-year learning plan. In grade 10, our students meet in groups of five to 10 with their counselors to plan for their high school. Grade 11, they meet in small groups of five to 10 students for post-high school planning. And then in grade 12, there's individual meetings with all potential graduates to go over their college and career plans and their graduation checks. Again, all students have access to staff, and we have a high number of students that reach out to adults. We have a high number of students that say they have an adult in the building that they can go to if they need to. We've also partnered with Bonafide U. I think we've talked with you about them in the past. It's an organization started locally in Mata Medei to bring about the positive use of social media for our students. We have had a depression screening for many years. We're in conversations with Dr. David Thorson and Molly Kern. She's a licensed family therapist, to bring in an anxiety screening also, because we're seeing a rise in the number of students that are exhibiting anxiety. We have exit meetings for students transferring out of the school. We have licensed registered nurses. We've introduced some online course offerings in our own building to help with remediation. We do the MCIS, which stands for the Minnesota Career Inventory Survey, which is what each ninth grade student will fill, will complete with their counselor when they have their individual meetings. We have peer tutoring at the high school. We have a reentry team planning and implementation when students have to be housed outside of our district. We use some restorative justice practices. We have had training on trauma-informed professional development. And again, we have Zephyr Ambassador and our Zephyr Crew programs to help students new to the building transition in and reduce some of that anxiety that they might have about without, you know, being in the building prior to that. And we move on to our pre-intervention practices. That's for our students that are struggling but not having an individual education plan. They're identified through a Friday meeting that the team gets together, and names are given to the team, and they meet every Friday, and we talk about the students that could use some additional support. We've been able to use Angel Fund resources. There's a backpack program so that students that might need food on the weekend can take that with them. We have co-taught classes for some of our more struggling learners. Again, the co-located programs. We follow up on the depression screening if students do identify, self-identify as feeling depression. We have a Hazleton Curriculum and Health class. We have a homeless liaison. We have a parent communication network, and we bring in speakers from the Youth Service Bureau. Might be topics from social media, chemical use, just a wide variety. They have presentations on almost anything that would be interesting to our families. Our professional development, we, just last Friday, we had Dr. Thorson and Molly Kern in to talk with us about anxiety, depression, and suicide prevention. We work with Washington County, their Connect Program. We have the Washington County K-9 Partnership, which is when the narcotics dog comes to the high school and does a search through the building or the parking lot. Our problem-solving team that I talked about on Friday morning. We have Washington County Diversion Services for students that need some additional support. And we have a school resource officer in our building who works closely with us to help our students. The study strategies class that Jody can speak to a little bit if you have questions about that. Again, our Zephyr Crew, and then our 504 plans. For our individualized practices, those would be students with an individual education plan. We have exit meetings. We have the education plans and we follow them. We have the individual education team meetings. We have intake meetings, parent intervention resource consultation, peer mentoring, and transitional meetings when a student might be transitioning out or back into the high school. So we have quite a few things that we have in place at the high school. Going on to the social emotional standards, we're part of the district-wide team, and currently that team is identifying the social emotional learning standards and where they're implemented in the high school. And we're looking at how we can strengthen our system to support our struggling students for the next year and beyond. If we go to our student out-of-district placements, these are typically students that we can't service at the high school because their needs are so great. In 2015-16, you'll see that we had nine students out of district. In 2016-17, that number rose to 20 students. And now this year, we have 15 students that are placed out of district for their needs and then their learning. So 1.2% of our Mata Medei High School students are currently receiving mental health services outside of the district. That could include partial hospitalization, which would be six to eight weeks, day treatment, which could be six to 18 months, or it could be a residential program depending on the needs of the child. Then you'll see on the next slide what we're doing in school. We currently have 60 students enrolled in our study strategies class. Jody, would you like to speak to that at all? Would you on the spot?
We're excited by our course. This year, we did increase the course, so we added a section. We were at three sections last year. This year, we have four sections. I believe we probably could add more if we needed to. It's a broad range of students. We have students that may be in there for academic reasons. Sometimes the students who are transitioning back from a mental transitional-type place for, it could be chemical, it could be for anxiety, it could be for depression, and they just need a place to help get caught up with their academics, and then we help them back into the classroom. We also have students that are with us for, boy, I could just go on on this, for, it could be if it's a court situation and they right now just need a place to work, they're with me. They could be in class and all of a sudden feeling very anxious, and they just can't function. All they do is say to the teacher, "I really need to go out to Ms. Tester's room." There's not a question in the building. They go. And I just let the teachers know. We process, we figure out what's going on. We also work through some of the students who may have had in-school suspension, may be joining me, and we talk through why are they with me, how'd they get there, what do we do to resolve this situation, whatever the reason is, and what are we going to do differently so I don't see you again for this reason? I always love having you in my room, but it doesn't have to be for behavioral reasons. We, some of the curriculum we use is basically making sure they're always following up on their grades, they're checking on their grades. They are touching base with teachers. If they are not able to take the test in the classroom, they make arrangements with their teachers to take the test in my room, because a lot of times our students who academically are struggling, the biggest thing is other students are finishing like this, so they think they have to hurry where they can be in my room, and it's just a smaller space. Our classroom is anywhere between 15 and 20 students, and it's coming and going. The kids are coming and going all the time in that room, and it's just no one as a, we call it a study hall, there's no label to the room, except for the adults. So unless you have other questions, I think that's kind of what we do.
And you mentioned the in-school suspension, and we've had 57 students this year that may have typically been suspended out of school, that we're following into our goal of keeping them in the school. They spend the day with Jody or another teacher. Their classroom teachers come down to visit them. They work on their schoolwork, so they get that done. And they also have an opportunity to complete information to offset the behavior that got them into the room, whether it's having an e-cigarette on campus, or, you know, then they would learn about the health effects of taking part in that and not following school rules and those types of behaviors.
Yeah, we use a curriculum for all students that have in-school suspension depending on what the situation is. They have to fill out a whole package of paperwork on what the situation might be, and then we process through with it, and then they close it out. And I always say you have to figure out how to make it right. I do not force a student or an adult to ever say, "I'm sorry, but you got to make it right because we've got to work together." And we need to be able to communicate and be able to understand whatever happens. So in the next time, if there is, how are you going to handle this? So that's what we do.
And then the bulleted topics are the reasons that students might need to be in the room with Jody or Trina or whoever might be in that room that day.
Yeah. So I kind of touched on all of them.
Yep.
Do you want me to go on?
That's it? That's our last slide. What questions do you have for us? Or comments?
So is the in-school suspension in your room?
Correct.
It is in your room?
It is in my room.
So if the kids feel anxiety, how do they know who you are if they've never met you?
That's a good question. I think if you ask students in Mata Medei High School, they know who Ms. Tester is. They know that Ms. Tester is a safe person. I think my name out there is pretty well-known for a person that can help students from multiple levels, from a student who has...
And I agree with you all the way to your top line of students because when it comes to the final, we have a student who maybe I'm not the right person, but they need to test somewhere else. I will work with the teachers in that building to find a place for that student to test. If a student needs a safe place in my room with 250, I will find a place that I have a role, that's my responsibility, and that's what I'm doing for an athlete.
I work very closely with my colleagues. My colleagues know where they can go for supports if they have a student that's struggling. We will process, we will work through some ideas on different things we can be doing. I'm a key person that they come to so I can, I'm part of the Friday morning. I'm the only teacher on the Friday morning meeting, because then I have the background as the teacher too, so I can come at it. As a teacher, this is what we see. It's very different than people who have an admin or the counselor or psychologist. They're trained differently than what us teachers see. Is that kind of answered?
Well, I think that, I think that most kids know who you are by the time they leave. I'm just curious, like, if there's an introduction for ninth graders that, because I don't know.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good idea. I'm kind of...
How you're introduced to that?
That's a great suggestion. I think that's something we can look at. I'm one who, I don't put myself out there that way ever, and maybe I need to do that more. I, I just, kids find me, and I find them.
Or teachers refer to me?
Yeah. Yep, and what's nice about the teachers referring to me, it doesn't matter, I can walk into any classroom at any time, and it's, oh, you're in trouble. That's not the feeling. It's, oh, it's just Ms. Tester. And then I can pull them out, and it's nice. So if they need to see, let's say Amber from Canvas Health, she can't walk in there because then the identity's gone. I can walk in and grab a student, say, "Come on, we need to do this quick," and blah, blah, blah. And I get them down there, and nobody knows anything. So that privacy is there for our kids, and that is huge. And that trust for the kids know that, okay, they're going to have a place with Ms. Tester. It's not my story to tell. It's the child's story to tell. And that's what I do, even with in-school suspension. I let the teachers know it's the student's story to tell the teachers. I encourage the students, the teachers, to come down, meet with the student, because then there's another adult in their life to figure out what is going on. And it's the same way if students are having a day and they just need a break, I let the teachers know that. Please come down, talk to them, because sometimes that's all they need to know for the student and the teacher. If they have that conversation, then the students are like, oh, I do have another adult. Okay, I'm feeling, okay, I can at least tell Ms. Buckingham that I just need to go to Ms. Tester's today. And we're also, what's nice in our area, we have spread out in different places. So at the north end of the building, if there's a situation that, we can get the kids down to Dr. Schnell's office. So she's there. Then you have the counseling area, which is in the middle of the building. Then you have me, who's down in the WEC Center, in the media center, where it used to be we were kind of confined, but now we're spread out, so at least if somebody, and the kids know, okay, at an intake meeting, get here, great. If you can't, get to the Dr. Schnell's office, and she'll get me, or vice versa. So it's kind of a spread out throughout the building. But I, yeah, so I think that's a great idea. There's things I probably, I don't put a label to myself because that gives it away.
Sure.
You know, oh, she's that, she's the behavior specialist. No, I'm Ms. Tester. That's who I am. Because if I'm known as the behavior specialist, then people think that the kids that are with me are behavior kids, and that's not the case. They're kids that are having a moment and need some extra support in whatever it might be. And that's what I pride ourselves on at the high school, is not about the label, about what the need is for the child.
What role do the social services groups play? Are they connected to you a little bit with what you do?
Yep, great question.
And are they, are they filled up? I mean, I think it's great that you have these here. A lot of kids need them, I know that. And I just want to know how you interact and if they're, you know, being serviced.
Because they're outside, all families have to sign a release. So it's really up to the family. We do, especially Family Needs, Amber. I would say most of her clients have an open, signed release, and I do work with them. Otherwise, for sure, the counselors, they have a release there, and the information might be shared, that kind of stuff. I do work very closely with Amber, and Amber is full, and she does have a waiting list. Our chemical health from Hazleton, which, she's been a great resource for any of our students who have an e-sig or any type of chemical that has been brought to our attention. Part of their reentry meeting is they also have to meet with her, so they kind of have a conversation. So that's awesome to have that. And she's not as full, but it's growing. And then Kate, I don't work as close with Kate at this point.
Sadie.
Sadie.
I always call her Kate. Kate's a hazelton.
Yes.
Has she?
Sadie? She's with Canvas Health, and she works with students in the area of sexual health, texting, those kind of things, inappropriate.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. She runs a group every Monday called Real Talk. It's a small group where students come together and they talk about issues that their, the students are challenged with, with their sexuality and other situations connected.
Does that work out pretty well?
Yeah, it does.
And the same with Sadie, as any student that if they, I will do for discipline reasons. If it was for texting or inappropriate type of posting of stuff, they also have to meet with her. Or if something's brought to our attention, we let her know so she can touch base with students, so they're open and they're willing to do that. And they set up, the counselors set up appointments with those three people.
And I just think it's really cool to have a team on the basis.
Yeah. It's so awesome to have them in our school, and they work so hard at trying to pull them during, if it's a lunch on their time, or if it's a elective course, or after school or before school. So then they're there. It's easier for our students to go there versus waiting after school and going at night and those types of things. I just, it's been awesome.
Thanks.
Anything else? Very awesome. So I have one more question about depression and anxiety screening.
So how often are you doing that? Or I mean, like, what grades are... Every student that takes help, and so typically that's in ninth or 10th grade, would be eligible to take the depression screening. Parents can passively opt out if they don't want their child to take it. We're talking with Dr. Thorson and Molly Kern. Lynn's been a part of that in bringing in an anxiety screener. But part of the conversation is that ninth and 10th grade might be a little too long to wait, that we need to get to the kids before they're 14 years old. Looking at, excuse me, looking at that across the district to see where, when would be the best time to really have more of that anxiety screening? And they were talking...
And it was just once a month?
Not necessarily. We'll have to talk about that, you know, would it be appropriate to have it at fourth grade and then later in middle school, or, you know, what would be the best times? But we just started the conversation this last week, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Just to finish up the report here, and we have to stop tonight.
Drive safely, please. Thank you guys.
Is it starting open?
It's starting to, just a little.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the first of two discussion items tonight. At first glance, these might seem rather detailed and wordy, but as I hope you'll see, critically important to our process here moving forward. Before I start, I want to thank Kevin, Julie, and Stacy, and certainly Mark and Lynn as well. They had the unfortunate reality of sitting through this during the finance committee meeting immediately before this. Very similar presentations here. I'd like to tell you that I'm going to revise these and make them more interesting, but there's kind of one way to present this stuff, so you're going to hear it again. The first item in your board packet here is the, is in a memo format, and it's up on your screen as well. This is just simply an enrollment update. So as we've done in the past, we're trying to update on the enrollment processes. We go through the windows here related to the open enrollment applications. What I have here on the agenda, four items. The first one is an enrollment window one update and clarification that is of importance here as we head into the second open enrollment window action on March 8th. And I'll explain the importance of that clarification item as we go along. The second and third items are requests from the regular meeting on February 8th, the enrollment philosophy on kindergarten. So that's been a request that's been made previously, and just due to a number of items, I just have not created the space and margin to have that conversation. I'm creating it tonight for the study session. I don't have anything formally prepared, but just creating the space so that the board can have that conversation that's been requested previously. Thirdly, grade progression ratios have been added to the projections. And then fourth and finally, just an updated timeline as we've shown in previous meetings as well. The first one here, and this is wordy, but it is important, so I will go ahead and read this. So enrollment window one update and clarification. So action on open enrollment window one, as we know, occurred at the school board study session on January 25th, so almost a month ago. 124 students, showing below in column B, which we'll get to after I get done with this, were approved. So 124 students were approved as part of that process during window number one on January 25th. The 124 students that were approved on January 25th were given a deadline of February 15th to give their intent to the district. So if you were approved on the 25th as an open enrollment family, we need to hear from you by Feb. 15th, either we're coming next year or we're not coming next year. Of the 124 students approved, 93 have accepted and plan to attend next year. The other 31 either didn't get back to us or declined acceptance for next year. So this is similar to last year, and we're just going through that process and trying to have a full understanding of the ramifications. So this is the clarification that we're going to seek, and much of this is going to happen on the back of this page, so I'll stop with saying, we need to seek approval or a better understanding of those 31 students. And by 31 students, I mean the difference between the 124 that were approved and the 93 that are coming, or have given their intent to come to our school district next year. Flipping on to the second page, we'll spend much of the time here looking at the chart. So you can see we have the columns A through F. Obviously, A is the grade number. Column B, these are the 124 students and their respective grades that were approved on January 25th. So you can see kindergarten, we're waiting until after registration here that happens on March 1st. In first grade, the board approved 12, second grade 10, and on down the line such that the sum of all those grades is 124. Column C shows the intent. So after window one, we gave the families up until Feb. 15 to give us their intent. So in first grade there, you can see the 12 were approved, 10 said yes. Okay? Column D are the total remaining applications. So again, looking at first grade, 12 were approved on the 25th, 10 said yes. We have 13 remaining applications, okay? Causing and not going to column E or F yet, but just looking at columns A through D. Does that make sense so far? Okay. Here's where this gets tricky, okay? We, the district administration, we need to go back and get the 31 students to meet that 124 that was approved in window one. However, we are able to do that based on the approvals per grade. In some grades, in other grades, we are not. And let me provide an illustration. Again, looking at first grade, 12 students were approved, 10 have given their intent. We have 13 remaining applications, so based off of that, we can go back and get another, get two more to get to that 12. Looking at ninth grade, not picking on ninth grade, just highlighting it as an illustration, 23 were approved, 17 are coming. We can't go back and get another six because we only have two remaining applications. So we just need some clarification on that 31. Is that 31 in total, as the board understands it? Knowing that if that's the case, we will be over what the board approved in some grades and under in others. Or is that total an authorization only up until that approval per grade? So what I show in column E is a roadmap to get to the 31. If we look at column E through the lens of only being able to go up to the approval per grade, all of a sudden, in first grade, that five under column E drops to two. Do you understand what I'm saying? And so if we're only able to seek approval up until grade level, that 31 drops to 14. I'll just do the math for you. And then that projected enrollment for next year, unfortunately, would drop from 3,250 to 3236, which would generate additional budget adjustments for next year. So we're just, we need to seek some clarification here, and why this is important tonight is we hope to go and mail out acceptance letters so that we can have a clear picture by the second enrollment window on March 8th. So we need to go back and kind of get through the details here in the next two weeks, come back with a clear picture so you're comfortable with the data that you're looking at on March So I'll pause there, wondering if there's thoughts on that.
Well, I would comment that I think we need to find the 31 students. And I also would say that those 31 percentage wise, those 31 that I think, they still be off our approval. approval plan.
I think that right now, all you have the authority to do is what we've approved through the resolutions. So if you want us to revote on something, I think that's what we have to do.
The resolution was specific by grade level. And so the resolution very clearly puts it at, by grade level, we can't change. I mean, you can change those numbers by coming back to the board with new proposal, but the resolution.
It brings us to 14?
Right. Yeah, so I said, if we need to change that.
We could, yeah, we could. But the way the resolution was done at the meeting was specifically by grade level.
Okay. And that's what we were seeking clarification on. Was the 24, or excuse me, the 31 to get from the 93 to the 124 in total, or was it per grade? And what I'm hearing is that the resolution, as the board understands it, was per grade. And the only way to get the 31 is to amend that resolution.
So that would mean additional.
Well, I'd be okay amending the resolution to.
Maybe a new resolution, actually.
Yeah.
The resolution's done.
Yeah.
Making a new resolution to allow them to do what they need to do to get the 31 students.
Are you making that motion? For a new resolution?
Sure, yeah. I move that we make a new resolution to allow the district to do what they need to do to get 31 students.
One second.
I'm going to speak against the motion. We look very carefully at grade levels. We have some concerns from some of our high school coaches about the total enrollment of the high school. I think with more parameters, it could be looked at. If we looked at building size and other things like that, that would help the resolution. I'm not ready, I've not studied the numbers well enough to be able to make an amendment to the resolution tonight, but I would encourage other people to vote against it.
I don't have a lot of time. I think that's part of the consideration.
I just, I had, because we had this meeting earlier, I already expressed this, but I do, for the rest of the members on the board who weren't there, I do feel like that because we voted it in this parameter, I feel like we have to uphold that. And now I understand there's a new motion. That was what we had wanted to look at in this, in this group, study group, or this other committee, subcommittee we had set up. And we, you know, we should have done that by now. And I think that doesn't change anything right now, but I feel like this is something that we really need to give some consideration to and get a structure in place that will outline how we go forward with open enrollment. I do think it needs to be a better, a better way. And I feel though, that we're kind of stuck to the one that we've been doing until, until we've fully vetted what we want to do going forward. Because I, I am open to the idea of doing it by school rather than by grade. But I'd like to know, what are the pros and cons of that? What have, how is, that was the whole purpose of us setting up that subcommittee. And we've only had the one meeting and we didn't get any information about how is this done in other districts. And I just feel like we need to be fully informed before we change to something else. I think we know what we have is not ideal. And open enrollment situations are never ideal, but we should fully vet whether there's a better way forward. And I feel a little nervous just jumping to this without knowing the pros and cons of it, since I only know the way we've been doing it. And, and just feel strongly that we need to really know what we're jumping into if we go a different direction.
What about looking at these grades? I mean, we're not going to be able to make up six in 2nd grade, but we can bring in two now. We can bring in one in 1st grade. And I mean, we could tell one person on the list. We can pull three in for 4th grade, one for 5th, two for, we can pull in.
We can pull in 14.
Yeah, 14.
Yeah, he can pull in 14 more.
The old resolution.
Yeah, that, that he has the authority.
Okay.
Right.
My biggest fear is that we're going to repeat the past and end up short students our next school year. So that's why I think we should allow the district to do what they need to do to get the 31 in. We're in this position, not because of that alone, but it's a part of it, a pretty big one.
So, so by giving a blanket, go ahead and do any, you know, let in any number of students. There could be some, some really unintended consequences that would be unpleasant for people. So I don't think that any of us deny that we really want to hit that enrollment target. But, you know, when you start getting bubble classes, our goal really is 300 per class in the high school. And, and you start looking and it's this slow gradual creep of 300 to 315, and then pretty soon it's 325. And, and.
Yes.
And so that is concerning. So that's what we're trying to.
But I also feel like we've had this conversation before, and we got caught short. So that's just my two cents.
And I would kind of concur with that. I'd also say that we do want to have these bigger conversations, but in the meantime, we're in a time crunch with this coming enrollment and budgeting process that, yeah, I think we should have done it in some order. Rather than, because we can have lots of discussions and go on about what our philosophy is and what that keeps it going, but in the meantime, we've got to build this buzz coming forward is very efficient for growth.
I guess, you know, the number that jumps out to me is the 4th grade. There's 17 applications. So my concern is that there was a parameter set by the board years ago before I was here, of eight sections per grade at OH. Now it's down, they're getting there, they're there. So if you let in the 17, then you'll most likely add a teacher, which makes sense. But then that takes it most likely up to nine sections, which I'm not opposed to. I just feel like, should the board have conversation around that before we just give a blanket? I just feel like it's so, it's gone from so many different directions. I just feel like we need to be fully aware of, if we make that decision, what that, what that entails. I'm not opposed to doing that. I just feel like the conversation, I'm sorry?
That's if you're six.
No, but look. But they're 17.
17.
And they're, no, no, they're saying if they don't get six somewhere else, they could take another six from 4th grade. So you could, they could potentially take all 17, if they, if they couldn't find 17 students in any other grade. And so that then goes against a precedence that was set by the board. So that's all I'm saying, is that I'm very open to whatever needs to happen. I just don't want to make a vote here that then kind of contradicts, it essentially contradicts what the board has set in place previously. I, there's just some consequences here that just to do this quickly makes me a little nervous.
Could I say just one thing about, like even if you did say, if you looked at it professionally, we didn't look at it, would it make sense to take the 17 in? And then does it average out to actually be smaller class sizes if you have nine sections versus the larger class sizes at eight sections? And so really, for a student or a child's academic experience and education, it would be better for us to take in and have nine sections, have smaller class sizes. So we look at that in, and that's what we're just kind of asking for. Like looking at the larger numbers, of course, we're not going to make a decision, like say if it bumps over in an area that, oh, now that class or that grade level, it's, it's going to impact them academically and educationally. We, we don't want to do that as administrators and professionals. We'd look at it, what's best for the kids. But those are the numbers that you have to kind of judge once in a while. Like, okay, you can't be quite so tied to specific grade levels. And I think that's just what Bill's asking for. Because if we go with, say, just the parameters and the numbers you have there, we have to set the revenue or the budget, or he does, has to set the budget. And so then we have to actually make more reductions. So then you're making more teacher reductions and then they, you know, then they're cut at that time. Yeah, that's, it's a hard timeline. I understand it's hard.
Well, it sounds like we definitely have a difference of opinion on some of this. And, you know, I think we've had the conversation, one way to be deliberate about the eight sections and to try to not have these big spikes. I, which sounded good a couple of years ago when we made these, when we've talked about these things, it did sound good. And in a perfect world, it still sounds good. But what we're facing, I think, before us is this idea that if we can't get to a target such as this, we're going to have to go ahead and take the overall target down. And that's going to precipitate cuts. So I think that's, that's really what we have. It's between accepting a few more students or budget cuts. And which is the worst? And I think that's, you know, in a way, that's what we're thinking about. And I get all the idea that it would be nice to be planful and have had the subcommittee that was tasked to look at this, be, have a little bit more recommendation and come before us. But we don't have that luxury at this point. So it would be my thought that we go ahead and give, Bill has presented, I think, a very good thoughtful laid out plan. He needs to have a budget target, and he needs it pretty darn quick. And so it would be my thought to take Bill's recommendation and honor the motion on the floor. So.
Is the motion this, or is it, the motion that was made was any 31? It's not what's on the paper. That's where I'm struggling, part of where I'm struggling. If it's any 31, I'm concerned, as is Julie, about the total number that could end up in a single grade level because of a desperation to meet a number, because the board has passed a resolution for that number. But the resolution isn't what you just stated, Kevin, which is different.
Just the 31 on the list?
Right, right. The motion on the floor is 31 anywhere, they can get them. Is that right? That's how I heard the motion.
They need to do what they can do to get the students. That's, yes.
But I'm hearing, do you want to amend the motion to take these 31? Start with that.
Well, that would be better than not, right?
Right, yeah.
I will, I will go ahead. If we can come to an in-between position, I'll amend the motion to take the 31 as listed without the latitude of going further.
That's kind of what I was trying to say. I wasn't trying to say we need to go beyond 31 to get 31. So.
So they meant, they meant here's to take these 31.
That's fine with me.
So the micro conversation, that's column B?
Yes.
Someone sort of suffered to amend. It's Kevin's room.
I'd second.
Any discussion on that?
I have a question. Or may I ask a question? So that would then take you to 3250?
Yes, good question.
Okay. So then after window two, it will potentially be a different number. But will your budget still be set on 3250?
Both very good questions. Let me take them in order. So column F then is just simply 1st grade at 197. That's simply the kindergarten number from this year, which is 182. Adding to it, column D, which are the students that gave, or excuse me, column C, the 10 students that gave their intent, plus column E, the authority to offer five more. 182 plus 15 is 187. This is, what did I say, 187? 197, can't count that high. So that would be our projected enrollment based on those estimates. To answer the second part of your question, the reason why we're flowing through this now is so we can provide, whatever the numbers are, the best possible numbers to you on March 8th, when we're asking you to look at window two, open enrollment. In order to do that, we need to be able to go out and offer acceptance to either 14 students or a different number. And get that work done so we can get you the best possible numbers by the 8th, so that you know the impact of what happens on the 8th. Because after the 8th, after open enrollment window two, whether that number is 3250, 3236, or 3270, or 3288, that's the number that I'm building the revenue budget on. At some point, we have a drop dead date, that's our expected enrollment. I'm building the revenue budget on that, and that will generate the corresponding budget adjustments on the expenditure side in order to balance for next year. The timing on that, because April 12th is the board meeting date where we have action on non-renewed contracts and proposals on ULAs for next year. So after the 8th, we have to circle back and come up with recommendation on reductions, have discussion on March 22nd related to those recommendations for reductions, reflective of the new enrollment number and corresponding revenue budget. And then right away on the 12th, action on the reductions, ULAs and proposals on, non-renewed contracts and proposals on ULAs. So it's really a time crunch into a month and a half here. But it really starts now with an understanding on what to do with that column E, or variation there.
So Lynn, can you just comment, if we accept these numbers in 4th and 5th grade, is that putting us at very undesirable class levels? Do we need, do we need the 15? Do we need the 12? I mean, the 17 and the 12 to make it so we could have another teacher so that the class sizes aren't 28 and 30 at OH Anderson?
We would have to look at, you know, I would have to have the exact numbers and stuff. But looking at, okay, maybe we wouldn't take all 17 or all 15 in that one grade level because we'd have to, like, average it out to say, all right, does this make sense to do that? And do we get smaller class sizes then?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if adding six is going to bring the class sizes up to 29 or 30 at OH Anderson, I think, I mean, that's the piece that's confusing. So in column E, the numbers at OH.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, that's, that's the detail information that I'm curious about.
Yeah, we do have that on.
Right. I just, I mean, the board has had very little time with this. And that's one of my concerns, is that we don't know or understand the thought behind this. Because I look at those numbers at OH Anderson and wonder why we don't take 10 at 5th grade? Because then you move that bubble out quickly into the middle school where there's more capacity. But you accept a bunch of 4th graders in, OH Anderson stays large for longer. And so I don't understand the rationale for picking these numbers when there are other scenarios that might have better benefits. I feel like we're just rushing to add kids without thinking about all the implications of these numbers. Because, you know, if you up 5th grade and maybe add a teacher there and not accepting more 4th graders, it's a different scenario next year.
Which is a good thing.
I don't know. We have an amendment on the floor.
Yeah, we're just getting an amendment.
We can't amend an amendment. So we have to vote on amendment.
We have a larger school and we need more 6th graders. So yeah, accepting the 5th graders in, and then, you know, having nine sections and smaller class sizes, it's a good place to add that, you know? So those would be things we'd evaluate and we'd say, okay, is this, does this make sense to actually add the 5th grade group? And then there's nine sections, and then you have less.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying. But the motion, that's not the motion. So that's why I want to make sure we get the right motion that does the right thing.
Right. But what I, what I'm saying is that as, as the administration, if you say, okay, you can, you can take in so many more to get to that number, that's what we would look at. We would look at that as a team and say, does this make sense educationally for each grade level? I mean, we'd look at that with a fine detail. That's what we do. I mean, that's.
Isn't that what you did by offering column E? I mean, where did column E come from?
Column E?
Yep. So column E came from me.
Okay. Just to alter it.
And here's how I was generating.
Now it makes sense.
The 2nd grade, where the numbers are the same as the total remaining applications, that's where the number came from. I.e., in 2nd grade, the total remaining applications were two. So the superintendent author, authority to offer enrollment was two. In the other areas, so that got me to 14. I then went to grade 10, based on some of the discussion from tonight. I then went to grade 10, based on some of the discussion from tonight, which increased grade 10 to a projected 314 for next year, which is that bubble that we've been talking about. However, when you add together grades nine, 10, 11, 12, and divide by four, you're still at an average of under 300. That combined with those grade progression ratios where you actually, similar to other districts, lose some secondary students, I felt the most safe going there next. So 14, and then I've added on grade 10, that got me to 18 or 19, and I needed 11 more. And to be honest with you, I tried to sprinkle them in the best through the remaining grades as I could, just to provide an illustration tonight. So the comment that was made about, is that the best thing related to sections? That's a fair comment, in my, in my opinion.
So what, so what Lynn said about administration sitting down and looking at best scenarios has not happened.
Best scenarios? I need more information.
Lynn was saying that the administration would sit down and look across all the numbers and choose what's best educationally for children, and so column E is not based upon that philosophy that was just shared with us.
That was trying to hit a, that was trying to hit a population target.
Yeah.
Which essentially goes back to Mike's first motion. Well, so.
All the question on the amendment on the floor.
Amendment on the floor is to take these.
The amendment on the floor is to amend the motion to column E.
To column E. So question has been called. All in favor of amending the motion to column E? Correct? Please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Does not carry. Does anyone propose another motion?
We have a motion on the floor.
Or though still, which is.
Personally, we should just take, get to 31.
Right. But that motion's still open on the floor. The amendment failed, but the motion hasn't been voted on.
You'll call the question on that one, too?
Sure. I'll call the question on that one, too.
I think so. That motion is to take 31 students.
Anywhere.
Just wherever you can get them.
I have a question. I called the question. You can't ask any more.
We can't have any more discussion?
No questions been called. Can we take 31 students no matter where we find them, essentially? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Stacy? Your name? And it does not carry. Any other resolutions?
Can we, yes. Make a resolution that we accept the 18 kindergartners that are the children, that are siblings and children of employees.
Make motion for a second. Motion, yes. We're going to take those kids, I know we are.
I make the motion that we accept the students in column E in grades six through 12. Oh, I'm sorry. Six through, six through nine. Column E, six through nine. Two sixth graders, one seventh grader, and two ninth graders.
I want to take one more in 10th grade.
Is that in addition to the 14?
Oh, and one in 10th grade. Thank you, Dr. Larson. So my motion is, third time's the charm, I'm going to get it right. Two sixth graders, one seventh grader, two ninth graders, and one 10th grader.
Is that in addition to the 14 that they already have?
No.
Or is that to take from the original resolution?
Those are done. No, I'm looking at column E. So if we take, okay, I scrapped my motion then because those would already be included.
Right.
Those are included in the original resolution.
You sound the original, you went back one.
Thank you, Judy. Yep.
There are 14 kids here that you can take.
Right. I can't tell who those are by the chart that's been provided without a couple minutes to calculate.
But those 14.
Right. Those are included in that 14, so that motion is not needed. I resend my motion.
So what we're sending right now is we're only taking 14 kids. We're now.
3236 is the number, which would generate about 150,000 more in budget reductions that you're going to see on top of the 1.6 million.
So, so could, would, could we have a recommendation about what to do in fourth and fifth grade? Because we, I think you can see we're willing to take more students. We just, I mean, or do you need more time to analyze how many we should add?
And it does make sense that we look at that fifth grade class.
Yes.
And add a section because they pop right into sixth grade the next year.
And with the fourth grade class, adding six makes it just this, they're just bulging at the seams. But if you add the 17, then you get a ninth section.
Exactly.
But that's, but that, but I guess, I don't feel comfortable voting on that unless I know that's, that is the idea.
At this point in time, we're assuming 231 students in eight sections, which would be 28.9 students per class. If we took in, in fifth grade, the 12 other ones, then we'd be looking at 243, and it would be about 27.4.
With an additional.
With additional.
We have eight additional.
It all comes, sorry.
So the 231 is reflective of the four. And so the difference between the 12 and the four is eight.
And at fourth grade, we also have six off there, so if we took all fourth and fifth graders, we would only have 19 more.
19 more total.
19 more total, right, Bill? You think? Or you're just, you're done. You're just done, sorry. So if you, if you take column E away from those, so 17, you'd have 11 in fourth grade and eight more in fifth grade.
Exactly. Yep. The, the column E in, what you just said is correct. Yes.
So I guess, and maybe there's not a way to know this, but what I'm questioning and the reason I haven't felt comfortable moving forward with this yet, but as you can see, I want to get there. I just need you to help me get there. If you, if we're at 228, and then we take the extra 11, I'm looking at fourth grade just because that's the largest number, then that takes you up to 239. Where is your cutoff as to whether you would add in a teacher or not? Because maybe three of those don't come, and then you're back down to 236. So then are we going to have eight sections of 29 kids? So do you see the fear here? We, we don't want to make it that big, but then what if it's 239, then where is your cutoff? And when you know you're, you'll add a section?
Stacy has pointed out what I consider to be the fatal flaw in the open enrollment window system. It seems, from what I can gather, that the board would like class size estimates, average class size estimates before they're comfortable making a decision on open enrollment windows. However, the district needs estimated enrollment before we can generate class size estimates. That's the fatal flaw in the system.
But you would have an idea of, well, hypothetically, if you reach 240, you would move to nine sections. So that's what I'm looking for, is where, where do you know, oh yeah, we definitely push for.
So just using round numbers again, and we touched on this a little bit at the Finance Committee meeting. On average, a 1.0 FTE is around 70,000 or 75,000. On average, each student brings in about 10,000 in revenue. These are very round numbers, okay? So your triggering point is between seven and eight students typically. In other words, if you're able to bring in 10 students and you add a section, you're actually creating a bit of margin there, using round figures. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's typically the triggering point.
Yep. And then that's what I said we'd be really looking at in detail as we went through the numbers and how many students there were in each grade level, to analyze that. Because with, now, without having that flexibility of that additional 31 wherever, we, we have to make cuts. And so then you know there are going to be larger class sizes, because we make another $150,000 worth of cuts on top of the $1,006,000. The class sizes get pretty big, so. And, and then you know that, you know, it doesn't matter if there's three more kids coming into that section because it's going to be a larger class, you know? So it's, it's really.
So a number of meetings back, we've been working off the assumption that we're working in straight grade levels K5. You know, as we go into the middle school and high school, some of the kids start to shift a little bit because of acceleration and different individual student needs, but we're working from the assumption that we're straight grade levels K5. But two or three meetings back, it was brought up by administration that we'd be looking at the possibility of not having that model. One of the administrators, I remember, who mentioned the possibility of mixed classes, doing combination classes of a 1-2 or something like that. Where's the administration currently on that idea that was brought forward by them a few meetings ago? Because that impacts this, too. But I was told when I started on the board that philosophically, the district disagreed with that, would never do that. But then it was brought up as something we would do, so I'm curious where we are.
Yeah. That is something that we would look at still, is those mixed grade levels. Say you end up with a bubble in fourth grade and fifth grade. You could do a mixed class of the fourth and fifth grade. And we, we have had a while back where you did more of that blended, blended classrooms, too. We could look at those options. We could look at options of, you know, is there an accelerated group? Or, you know, those types of things you could look at for, depending on what class level, what grade level it's at. But yes, no, we are willing to look at that. So that is.
We did that for quite a while.
Yeah. It was a while, a while ago, but then they went away.
I just really think that this body has to, we got to try to have a more flexible mindset and kind of learn from the past, but not look back at the past and see where we are today and try to be flexible. We're, our district is small enough, I think, that we can have some flexibility and be nimble and make changes that we need to make to do right by our students and our teachers. So I just wanted to throw that out there moving forward.
So as it stays today, as it sits today, you get 14 kids.
Are we asking Lynn to come back with a recommendation for O-H Anderson at, at the March 8th meeting? Because we are willing to accept more. We, we just need to know what it.
So philosophically, where the numbers are coming from and how it impacts the education of the, of the students.
So if you could give.
Projections, projections, so we could have more facts.
Maximum.
But it's also looking at what the current applications are. And that's a, that's a different way to go about it, too. We are responding to what applications have come in. Next year, second, grade four might go back down to eight sections. And so that's something we need, we need as a body to determine, how are we going to make these decisions? Because asking Lynn to do that, which I'm fully on board with, I totally agree, that's, that's a different way than we've ever approached this, because now we're responding to actual applicants and asking administration to say, we're going to add, we're going to change the number of sections per grade based on how many applications there are. Which is worth exploring, but it's, again, it's something that we need to be fully aware of. And, and again, like you, like Lucy said, what's the impact on every student?
Will the enrollment committee have an opportunity to do some more work before the next?
Board meeting to present some philosophical options, too? I mean, what's the.
Do we have timeline for that group?
Nope. It is, that group will meet again before the 8th. So the enrollment committee has an option to do some heavy lifting in terms of providing a recommendation to the board as well.
They meet Friday.
Oh.
They meet, huh?
They meet on the 8th. Okay.
Okay. Well, we can look at the calendar and see if we can.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We can do that afterwards, Stacy. Just send your last levy.
Okay. Also included in your board packet in a PowerPoint format is the 2018 levy planning. Before I start that, I do want to introduce Mr. Kelly Smith from Springstad, who is kind enough to join us tonight, not in a superintendent search capacity, not in a levy survey capacity, but in a capacity as a financial advisor related to a possible levy ask. So I ask Kelly to be so kind as to join us to possibly answer any questions that I cannot related to this levy planning. So up on the screen and in your PowerPoint is the start of the levy discussion, which in, in my opinion, is sort of the worst kept secret this fall, right? And part of that is just, okay, thank you, based on when you have a deficit forecast, part of the informal conversations surround a possible levy. So that's really why this is sort of the worst kept secret. You'll see that as we go through here, this is sort of the official unofficial kickoff to the levy planning. There's, this is a fairly aggressive timeline, and you'll see why and our rationale for that. And really, the purpose of this tonight is just to provide a general overview and to kind of get this rather large initiative kicked off on the right foot as we move forward. With that, we'll go to the agenda. So we'll start by looking, as we always do, at a timeline, finish, or move into background and historical information, specifically voter approved levy history related to Montomedi I, history comparison, both contiguous and districts we compare to from an academic achievement standpoint. Factors to consider, fund balance policy 714. So why would we be talking about fund balance policy when we're talking about levy planning? We'll fold that into the conversation as well. Budget parameters that we use to generate the 10-year forecast related to the potential levy ask, which is of critical importance. And then really, the, the meat and potatoes of the presentation draft dollar amount and tax impact scenarios, of which there are three different scenarios. So we'll discuss both the dollar amount and additional revenue for the district, and then the tax impact, the district taxpayer. So that looks like a fairly large undertaking. If we understand the first scenario, then we understand all three scenarios. So if I can put your mind at ease at all, we'll spend a lot of time on the first page, not so much time on the second and third page. We'll then look at challenges or kind of four main hurdles that we, we understand to be true and we know are going to come up related to the levy. And then excellence has a price. In other words, there's kind of an argument about the value proposition of public education around our country, not just in Montomedi, but, but across our country right now. So we'll, we'll discuss that and then finally take any questions or comments. So I'll go through this quickly. I would, would appreciate if it was more of a conversation, so feel free to ask me questions as we go through. Key dates, timeline. I think it's tonight, which is February 22nd. We, Finance Committee met earlier. School Board is beginning the levy discussions. The reason for the aggressive timeline, we are recommending formal school board approval of ballot language for the November levy by the meeting on May 24th. That's both a resolution calling for election and a formal decision on ballot language, which is an aggressive timeline. Gives the district three months to absorb levy survey information, discuss dollar amount and tax impact scenarios, have the meetings that we need to have to be comfortable by the end of May. And really, our rationale for that, although the decision does not, the last possible day to approve a resolution is not until August 24th, if we make a decision by May 24th, we have the 12 critical weeks of June, July, and August to, instead of talking about the what and the why, have those decisions made and go through the communication process related to it. And I just, I think that earlier is better on this process, and then we have a note. So we, we have some fairly established and successful communication vehicles in the district, the Globe being one of them. If a decision is made by the end of May, we can notify our constituents in the summer issue of the Globe, which arrives in homes the first week of July. So certainly that has an impact on, on the timeline as well. Background and historical information for the voter approved levy history. So you can see across the board where we've been since 1991. You'll notice that in 2014, our current dollar amount is 744. That's rounded. It's 74374, if you care. The reason why you're seeing 744 here instead of 1,044, which we'll look at in future slides. So I always want to be cognizant when you're seeing different numbers in voter approved levy information. 744 is the voter approved levy information, okay? 1,04374 is the voter approved levy plus the $300 under school board control. And that, the 1,04374 is the amount used for tax impact scenarios, okay? So that's the reason for the discrepancy, and you can see the voter approved levy history since 91. We'll get to that recent history in, in some future slides we talk about some challenges. School district levy comparison. So to me, this provides a pretty, pretty good illustration of where we're at compared to our contiguous districts and other districts that we compare to. So you can see that our current voter approved and, and board approved levy per pupil unit, we're at 1,044, rounded to the nearest dollar, compared to Stillwater, which is at 1511, White Bear Lake at 1534, South Wash at 1837. You can see the state cap far off to your right there is $1,967. So we are over $900 less than the state cap, which is, generally speaking, tied to inflation and tends to go up most years. On that list, we are the lowest levy per pupil unit, with the exception of Forest Lake, which is at $462.
Kind of a dumb question, probably, but what is, you know, Orinosa's 2011 and the state cap is 1,967. What is that?
Not a dumb question. Great question. So there's some alternative cap calculations. You'll recall in some previous stuff we looked at, Hopkins, St. Louis Park. You'll recall in some previous stuff we looked at, Hopkins, St. Louis Park, they have a voter-approved levy that's actually over the state cap. It relates to an alternate cap calculation that affects some districts on the West Metro. Without going into more detail than that, there are a fair few districts in the West Metro that are over the alternate cap.
Because they're just paying more.
Yep. Yep. And it has to do with some of their commercial makeup and things of that nature, too. Yep. Just for illustration, in St. Louis Park, for example, the commercial property generated in and around the West End has them have a very different tax makeup than we do here in Montomeda. And you'll see the importance of that in future slides. Fund balance policy. So the board probably thinks this is my favorite topic, and you've seen this slide previously. So I won't go over it in great detail, but it's important to know the item in red. The district will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of at least 8%. And on the next slide, which you've seen the numbers before, we'll talk about why, and why that folds into the levy presentation. So you can see where we were in 1516, the last time we had a balanced budget. We had 3.5 million at the end of the year in unassigned fund balance, and our percentage is 9.6. Last year, our audited financials showed an ending fund balance of 3.13 million, and our percentage dropped to 8.2. So we're still within parameters last year, but we're at the lower end. The school board approved the 1718 revised budget in December. That has us dropping to an unassigned fund balance of, read or I'll put, 2.3 million, which is about 5.8% as of June 30, 2018. The reason why I don't have a number in the next column we're going through, as we know from the previous discussion on enrollment, budget scenarios and all of that process now, so we don't truly know what our estimated fund balance is as of June 30, 2019, because we're going through that process now. What we do know to be true is that we have a fund balance policy in place that says 8% is the minimum. The importance of that relates to cash flow, having at least one month's operating cash flow in the bank for budget stability, establish and maintain a good credit rating related to a possible debt service. So it's important to retain good credit ratings, and we're going on a personal level for better interest rates on possible borrowing. And then limits the need for short-term borrowing during state aid holdbacks, which we've seen in the not-sufficient past.
So what's the fund balance right now? Are we below the 8%?
Has this policy kicked in yet?
It has. We have implemented this policy. It was asked in the Finance Committee, and truthfully, I don't know the answer.
So we are below the 8, and the policy's kicked in, and so the things you hadn't read in the previous slide are starting to happen.
We, they are. So to provide an illustration, the way we understand this is when we have hit this threshold, we have frozen allocations. We have not taken them away. In other words, if a building teacher has a $500 classroom supply budget, we have not taken that amount away, but we have not increased it. So the teacher has the right to spend up to that dollar amount, but we have not increased appropriations for any other things like textbooks or things of that nature. And so the reason why we're including this here, to be quite honest, is because of where we're at from a fund balance standpoint. This is not a recommendation to fold in the possible levy ask reflective of this reality. It is important to discuss this now. What I don't want to happen is to not discuss it now as part of the potential levy ask. Go through our audited financial statements, have Jim from MMKR come to this board in the fall, and then realize we should have discussed this in light of a potential levy ask in November. So that's really the purpose here. Moving on to budget parameters, so this is a key slide that I'd like to go over. You can see I have revenue, expenditures, structural imbalance, and parameters. So starting with revenue, we know that the state legislature sets the funding formula. State aid is 70 cents on every dollar we receive in the general fund. For the last biennium, which was 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, the state approved 2% increases for both years. So we do know that we're scheduled to receive 2% new money from the state next year in 1819. 2% for us, based on our student count, is about $400,000, okay? Going forward, following some forecast information and knowing that certainly the state forecast comes out on February 28th, and we're sitting here on February 22nd, we are recommending using approximately, using 1.5%, approximately $300,000 as our state aid revenue assumption. So we know we're getting 2% for next year. For 1920 and beyond, related to some assumptions for our potential levy ask, we're recommending using a percent and a half. Expenditures. On average, our educational expenditures have been increasing between $550,000 and $650,000 each year over the last 10 years. So we're using $600,000. The reason they increase, as we understand from previous meetings, are things like labor contracts, steps and lanes in most of our, in most of our labor contracts, inflationary costs, inflation in other areas, and then most certainly, things like healthcare. The inflation rate of healthcare, as we know on a personal level, much higher than the CPI inflation rate. So that's really driving that structural imbalance, right? For next year, the structural imbalance is $200,000, meaning state aid is increasing by 400. Expenditures, we're estimating to increase by that 600. That creates a structural imbalance of $200,000. Now, that's reflected, to put your mind at ease a little bit, in the budget assumptions that we've been discussing for next year, okay? So the parameters. So based off of that, we are recommending, obviously, we know we're getting 2% new money for next year on the revenue side. We're recommending using a percent and a half in 1920 and going forward. I'd like the board to reflect on that, and certainly, this will be an ongoing conversation related to the parameters, but it will be important for me that we have unanimous buy-in on what those parameters are.
And that's because you don't know what the legislature's gonna do. So we're assuming 1.5.
Exactly right.
21, 22.
And then on the expenditure side, I have a parameter of about $600,000 annually. So it doesn't have to be tonight, but eventually, I'd like to have a discussion on where we're comfortable on those parameters. So this is the first of three slides that we call kind of the meat and potatoes of the presentation. This is the dollar amount and tax impact scenarios. So Kelly and Springsteen played an integral role in this, and so what we did is we've discussed this tiered approach, right? And we'll explain the tiered approach in more detail later on, but essentially, what you're doing here is recognizing that the cost of goods and services in year one is going to be different than the cost of goods and services in year four, so that's gonna be different than the cost of goods or services in year seven. And so you're trying to align a potential levy ask to reflect that reality. And that's what we're doing here. The next three slides are very similar. They look at a tiered approach, 800,000 additional revenue, and I'll explain what that means, 1 million additional revenue, and then 1.2 million additional revenue. So very similar slides. We'll create, spend the most time on this one, and then if we understand this one, we'll understand slides two and three. So first, looking at referendum market value on a tiered approach, 800,000. So what we did is we pulled down referendum market value on a $200,000 home, a $350,000 home, and a $500,000 home. In our taxing district, which as we know is made up of all our parts of nine communities, the average home value is right about that $350,000. So just for ease of illustration, that's the role I'm gonna focus on for the scenario. So what we know to be true is that our current voter and board-approved authority, or board and ref, board and voter-approved authority, is currently that $1,043.74. Everybody sees that number. And that 1,043.74 on a home valued at $350,000, the voter-approved portion of property taxes on that home, it's $582.26, okay? Again, if I have a home valued at $350,000, based on our current voter-approved amount, I am paying $582 in voter-approved property taxes each year, okay? So looking at the next three columns, if this was a 10-year ask, starting in taxes payable '19, ending in taxes payable '28, okay? The first three years, taxes payable 2019 through 2021, the dollar amount would increase from 1,043 up to 1,264, an increase of $221.05 for those three years. Not each of the three years, just of those three years. That same $528.26, which is the taxpayer amount, would increase by $127. So it'd increase from 582 up to 719, okay? So then we just kind of continue on forward. Then with taxes payable in 2022, the amount, the dollar amount for the district would increase from 1,264 up to 1,485, or 86 rounded. The taxpayer impact then increases from 718 to 846, the same increase of $127. And then finally, in the far right, the third tier, which is year 7 through 10, it would increase from 1,485 to 1,706, the same $221 increase, and then the taxpayer amount would be 974, okay? Before I pause, I'd like to point out one point of illustration that I think is interesting and financially respectable for the community, for the district. That 1,706 in the top right, the tax, or excuse me, the dollar amount generated in year 10 of this potential levy ask would be $1,706.81, which, as you recall, the current state cap, as it sits this year, is 1,967. 10 years from now, the district would be over $200 under the cap where it sits right now, under this ask. Are there any questions on this rather complicated slide?
What is the percentage each section here? I mean, is there a percent?
I can translate that out. On the ballot, how this would read, and we talked about this, and this is maybe more information than an introductory, but on the ballot, how this would read, is it reads the dollar amount per pupil for taxes payable. In our case, would be 19 through 21, 22 through 24, 25 through 28. So the 1,264, for the ballot question, you take the 300 off. I'm just trying to be conservative because that's the taxpayer impact, but you take the 300 off for a ballot question. But I could calculate the percentages if you'd like.
Well, basically, I mean, you're explaining that this is going, I mean, this is in line with what kinds of inflation that, you know, we're trying to state keep up with. Does this keep us up with it or catch us up?
So really, the rationale for this, so this is sort of a new thing the districts are doing and having success with, both from a bottom-line standpoint as a district and also from a community support standpoint. So we did this in St. Anthony in 2014. I know Minnetoka has recently done it. The concept here is going out for a 10-year levy with the goal of having it be as close to a 10-year levy as possible. When we went out in '14, we did it knowing that we were going for a flat dollar amount. It was 10 years, but it wasn't gonna last 10 years. And we were right. And here we are back here discussing it now. Now, the fact is, is the district has been out four times, in 2010 on a new Wildwood and some secondary renovations, in 2011 on a renewal to the Capital Projects levy, which is critically important for our teachers and the tools that it provides them to teach in the classroom. 13 failed on an operating referendum, and 14 passed on an operating referendum. So we've been out four times in the last eight years for good reasons, but the goal here is to not see us for a while, if this passes.
In addition, if I may, the tiered approach simply reflects the reality of the structural imbalance based on contracts that we have, health insurance expenses, and inflation.
For future scenarios, when we look at these numbers, can we also get a median home price?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next two slides, if you understand this slide, then the next two slides are a piece of cake, because they're the same thing, just with, in a different, okay? So you can kind of tick and tie back and forth as you're looking at this and reviewing the numbers, both the dollar amount assumptions, and more importantly, to be honest, for illustration purposes here, the tax impact. So you can see that on the two sides here and how it relates based on the different revenue amounts. And what I hope we can narrow in on during future meetings is, okay, these are the scenarios. What, how does that overlay with the need? So finishing up here, I touched on a number of these, but I'd like to talk about the challenges. So we've seen four challenges here, or four main challenges that stick out that we have to talk about. One, the frequency. We've talked about that already, and that's gonna be a question that's gonna come up, and we need to be prepared to respond to that. And I think really, that tiered approach speaks to an option to respond to it. Certainly not an "and all be all," but it speaks to a way to respond to that. Uh, oh, sorry.
And looking at the frequency chart, based upon your projections, do you think we'll be going...
Going out in 2021 for capital projects again? Because that's not very far away either.
No, it's not. So 2021 on capital projects, I cannot see, based on how critically that, in part, that is. It's the teachers, it's the tools for our teaching staff to teach in the classrooms. That needs to be renewed.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah. Second challenge, the financial case for open enrollment for taxpayers. And I just have a couple of slides, or a couple of bullet points here. One of the biggest reasons people choose to live in an area is the quality of the schools. Important to remember, highest-quality schools help maintain home values. I mean, that's important for people that have kids in the system and also people that don't, and as it relates to the financial implications of open enrollment. How does that relate to some market value factors on your home? Healthy schools support healthy communities, just as much as healthy communities support healthy schools. It's important that we recognize that going forward. And then, we've talked about this before, but open enrollment affords our students the programming opportunities that otherwise wouldn't be provided. Two more challenges, we've talked about both of these, the property tax makeup. So although we have a lower-than-average at 1,044 voter-approved property tax levy, our tax impact tends to be higher due to our property tax makeup. So to illustrate, Stillwater has just about $500 more per student than we have on a voter-approved operating levy. However, their tax impact is lower, more commercial property than we do. This is gonna be important for us to communicate out to the community so that they understand the difference between dollars generated for the district and tax impact on residents. And then finally, general fund revenue per student. So this is not specific to levy, this is total, but this is a challenge for the district. We are trying to do more with less. Last year, in 2016, the average seven-county metro district collected 12,500 in general fund revenue, shown in the blue column in the middle there. Last year, Montomeda collected 11,278, over $1,200 less per kid than the average metro district. Now, that's partially tied to our levy, but that's not totally tied to our levy. It's also tied to some of our poverty counts or some of those things that provide critical funding for needs. So I don't want to mislead the board in that arena either. Finally, excellence has a price. I think, being relatively new to the community, this is an item that should be celebrated. U.S. News and World report ranked Montomeda High School the number-three high school in Minnesota in 2017, the top district in Minnesota for MCA results and achievement data for math and science, and the fifth for reading. There's a national debate about the effectiveness and value proposition of public education in America right now. Based on a lot of the details that you've seen tonight, we feel that Montomeda is providing a tradition of academic excellence and financial stewardship. The district's providing the community and our students with a great education, as you've seen here, at a great value, as you've seen on some of the previous slides related to the dollars generated per student and the levy. So this is sort of a trend that I could see hopefully following as we go through the process here. So the purpose tonight was just to kick off the idea, introduce the timeline, which again is pretty aggressive, but hopefully, this will get us going on the right foot.
Scott, your comments?
Yeah, I had one question. On scenario three, I just had a question.
On scenario three, I just had a question on the tax impact. Not the tax impact, but the amount that would be board voter authority. So for the third, you know, the third column, the third column way over on this end. So you can go out for above the cap? Because 2,038 is above the state cap right now. So we could project to go out above the state cap?
We'll be telling them.
Yes, that's right. And Orono was on the screen earlier. Although some districts have authority right now because they were over the cap when the cap was put in place.
Okay.
You can go out projecting into the future that it'd be over the cap. Bill mentioned earlier, there's an inflationary factor, so that cap runs throughout the year. If you get out 10 years and your authority is higher than the current cap, you would be limited by that cap.
Okay.
But you can go out and get more, but still be limited by that.
Why is there a cap?
That's the question to ask the legislature.
Okay.
Again, there was, there was not a cap. There's not always a cap.
When was this one put in place?
I want to say around the late 90s, early 2000s. I'll double-check when it came in place. Again, there were, you know, a number of districts at that time who were over the cap, and their grandfathers were a Kendall. And I would also state rural districts who are considered sparsity districts. The cap does not apply to them. They can go beyond the cap to the geographic.
Other questions? In front of the added superintendent's report. In search.
So the subcommittee has been meeting. Julie, Kevin and I have been meeting. And since the last meeting, to catch the rest of the board members up, we met with all three vendors who had put proposals forward for being our search firm. We met with each of them for about 30 to 45 minutes. We had a set of standard questions. We asked some additional questions. And after looking at the services provided, the level of professionalism that they were provided at, the things that we felt we really needed in terms of support within our district structures and size, we selected, based upon the authority from the board, to go with Springstead. So thank you very much to Nicole and Bill for working on the contract. As a board member, it's nice to say, we'll go with Springstead and take care of that. And some of their work happened behind the scenes, so we appreciate that. We met with Springstead earlier this week, representatives. And what you have in front of you is the agenda from that meeting on Tuesday and then also the survey that came out to you in email. So there's, I think, two things that I remember we need to take care of it, and Kelly might have additional things. Springstead has asked if there'd be one board member appointed, selected by the board, to be the key contact. And so I think we need to figure that out tonight to keep the process moving. And then we need to have a discussion on the survey, but I'm sure Kelly will want to update the board on some other pieces as well. Go ahead, Kevin.
Just, just to add, there was, I think, you know, we are under a little bit of a time crunch to get something done before 3:30. And so I think when we, we started and had the meeting, we got the paper proposals from the three search firms. I think there was some, some talk about, we got to really just get going on this and move. And had we made the, the selection just based on the paper thing, I think we, I don't know if we'd be where we are today. It was such a good process to actually have each of the groups come in and give their 30-minute proposal because it was very helpful. And the scientific approach of developing the profile and developing the gap analysis, which you could maybe explain a little bit more later. I guess what I'm trying to share with the other board members is we really have been very thoughtful and deliberate, but we are also moving expeditiously to, to get this going along. So there's been good meetings, good thoughts, and I think we're in good hands.
So I just had one more comment, and then you can take over, I guess, and we can start sharing our feedback on the, on the survey. But I wanted to let my fellow board members know that the push-out to the community will start next week right away. We should see some information in the White Bear Press on Wednesday. And at some point next week, there should be emails going out to people in the community and in the school e-news, weekly e-news. So surveys should, so we'll start to move along in the process. So who, so if Nicole or Kelly would like to speak?
Yeah, I think the only other thing to add to what Lucy mentioned, with the survey you guys have in front, that would be helpful to get through it tonight because in the emails we just talked about, we'll need to have that information before we can get that sent out. And then also, the focus, the meeting dates, where is the third order? Is looking at those that we talked about back on Tuesday, the 22nd. The focus groups and the potential meeting dates. We should look at the bottom of the agenda, but Kelly had it.
Also, there is going to be interviews of each of the board members. You maybe received those. So again, to keep this moving along, if everybody could make sure that they get back with the date and time that they're available. I know I'm starting tomorrow. I don't know if anybody else is going tomorrow, but I'm going tomorrow at 11:00. So they have 45 minutes is what they're saying, so.
If you've all had a chance to take a look at the survey and you have a printed copy in front of you. Again, thanks for, thanks for helping with this process. We're excited to be part of the process and helping with the search for the next expectation for the district. As candidates are looking at Montomeda, obviously, they're going to be looking at home with. They're discovering their websites. They're going to be looking at, you know, the papers that cover the communities. But they also want to know what the expectations are for them, meaning, what characteristics are you looking for in the leadership and management characteristics? This survey is intended to start to put together that piece. And we want a broad level of response to this survey. We're not just interviewing the board. We want to know what the community thinks. We're trying to provide numerous opportunities for community members and leaders to participate in the process. So this is a very general survey that we, we've used in the past. And it will be put together in electronic format, mailed out to groups, also put on the district website. So it's really out there for anybody to reply to. As we analyze that data, we will break it down, if it's school, district employees, community members, elected officials, to try to get a sense of, you know, different pockets of needs and desired characteristics based on the constituencies that are responding. So again, it's not a very long survey, but the sooner that we are able to finalize this document, the sooner we're able to get this information out to community members for their, for their response to the survey.
Do you want to go through each question? Do you want general comments? How would you like to approach the work?
I'm looking at question one. And there are three things that say, member of Booster Club, member of parent-teacher organization, member of MAF. We really don't have memberships like that. I think every parent is a member of the PTO. You don't really sign up to be a parent in the district. You're welcome to come to PTO. So that word "member," I think, doesn't help us or gain us any additional information on the person responding. If we could, I would advocate for removing those three lines.
Do you have anything you think should be revised?
I can't think of anything else.
The only thing, and I don't know that this is accurate, but I, I think if they actively volunteer, maybe then you're getting at that, somebody who's somehow actively involved. Because that's what those three were trying to get at. So if there's a way to word that, maybe?
Volunteer in the district.
Well, there's not really a
Well, there's two, sort of, but they're not really, I would, yeah. I don't think people will relate to that language. I like the idea of what you're saying, Stacy, in terms of there are a lot of people who volunteer a lot of time in our schools. And so if it just said something about volunteer and maybe to be able to check which buildings or district level, you know, volunteer at, you know, and select a building.
If yes.
Anything else you could add?
I think, did we, did we, my missing community education, I think we talked about.
I like that idea of having something around community education because it's such an active program. Or your child as a community participant? Because then you get, if they're
Kevin, if you ask, if you ask the chamber, if someone in the chamber can answer, is that in there?
Focus groups, I thought.
Oh, okay. That's later. I wanted to make sure it was on the right.
Is this a survey that you typically use? Pretty similar?
Basically, the structure of a survey and we already preached it a little bit to Montomeda, but yes.
Question two is troubling to me, but only addressed
Part of our population. We have a number of students who are open enrolled, and it sort of leaves them out. How long have you lived in the Montomeda School District? And when we're searching for superintendent, it impacts our open enrollment families equally. And so I'm not sure how to address that. But that is very, I think, disrespectful to our open enrollment families the way it's phrased.
How long have you had a student in the community?
I mean, what's the purpose of the data point? Because is it, you want to know how long? Because you could have people without children in the community.
Oh, sure.
You know, and so then you're, so you're asking a completely different question now. So what is the purpose of the data there? I would need to know that before I could help edit that.
The purpose in this question typically is to, obviously, impressions of a district and characteristics somebody might look at might be, might vary based on the length of time they've been in this community or active in this school district. So we're just trying to get a sense of, are people who've been here their whole life have one set of characteristics they're looking? People who've been here five years and less are looking at something else, trying to
Something like, how long have you been associated with Montomeda schools?
Or could you, could you break it up and say, how long have you lived in Montomeda district? If not in district, how long have your students attended Montomeda schools or?
Live slash open enrolled. Maybe.
I think you have a concern that you can
But there's also a significant portion of people who don't have kids in the district, so.
Right. Right. Are these based upon the superintendent competencies in Minnesota statute? Are these, in question three, are these based upon the superintendent competencies listed in Minnesota statute?
They aren't. It is not that list pervaded. But I can double-check and make sure that we covered those.
Well, and as a district, we've done a lot of work looking at those competencies and bringing it to those five, is it five, Dr. Larson? Main conceptual areas?
I think so.
I think it was five or six. So I'm not sure if we want to use some of that work. I like the number of different things here because I think it gets at what we're trying to do here in terms of looking at priorities. But, and also, this is a really general comment, I'm sorry, but in reviewing other surveys from other districts, oftentimes they have a lot more language around some of these to give the community a better idea what that means. Because if it says facilities planning, well, we've got buildings. So what does that mean? You know, is it maintenance? Is it future? So I think there's some more language that can go around those. And I was just looking at other ones, you know, online that were coming up just out of curiosity. And so I can send you some of those links I was looking at if you'd like. I just felt it gave community members a better sense of what that terminology meant. Because if you're not tied to schools, the language of education is very confusing.
I think you can send those links out. And I will verify the competencies. Obviously, some of these are listed on the maps. So the competency.
Right.
I'm making sure we have them all.
Right. Nicole, can you just go ahead and send that piece we've done with evaluation? Because that would show how we've grouped them and thought about them, and that might help in that revision process. I'd like to see a question nine, an open comment box. I think would be helpful. I think it would be awful to transcribe, or it won't be, it needs to be transcribed, it'd be awful qualitative data to look at, but I think it could be helpful. Any additional comments? Yeah. Well, just, you know, do you have any additional comments you want to share? Right, just in case we've missed something. Like open-ended. Okay.
Just going to make a comment about everything.
Yes. Yes. And some people will still write whatever they would like.
Do you have the information that you need from us?
I think so.
We just need the point person.
Yes, and I would ask on this. So we're, we're going to make some edits, obviously. Is there, Nicole?
Prove the final document, or you can give more of that, or?
About Nicole, who the point person is? Who'd like to be the point person?
Let me just explain.
Before we all jump in. All right, fight for it.
It's, it's just a way, we don't, we're trying to minimize the flow of emails coming to, in particular, Patty Hemmonover will be our point person. And she, I'm, I'm filling in for her tonight. But we don't, she doesn't need all of you emailing her with individual questions. We'd like that kind of funnel through.
whatnot, um, just to perhaps minimize that flow of emails back and forth. So that, that's what we're looking for, um, and hopefully we're clear enough in putting forward the information to you, um, that there aren't a lot of emails coming to that person, but if it begins to generate a lot, we'd like somebody here kind of acting as a clearinghouse for that information. And I would add one more comment, if we are getting questions that need clarification, we would respond to everybody. So you would all be getting that information, so if Dr. Payne asks a question, um, that we're going to respond to, it would come out to all of you, so you would see that.
And having said that, does the survey really like to do this?
I think it's important to have some consistency, that the three of us working so far, working with Nicole and have been involved. I know Kevin and Julie are doing quite good work on another project for community administration and structure, um, research, and so because I am unable to be a part of that, I'd be glad to take this off, so allow some consistency and get my folks and others to agree with that.
Thank you.
Very, you're up for it.
And if, if you, you had interest, uh, let me see, the dates we had set for potential community meetings were Tuesday, March sixth at four PM, and Thursday, March eighth at six thirty. Tentatively, that's what we had set up.
That's a good one.
We're not, we're not at.
Springstead is running those.
So, yes, I know there was a concern after the date to first, put all the, or the board meeting, but that's actually quite all right. Typically, um, I don't know how much participation board members would do at those meetings, and in fact, at times it can be somewhat, um, inhibiting for others who are there if the board's all standing around watching to see who says what and, and how they respond. So we don't see that as a problem, that there is a board meeting there. We're certainly going to be reporting to all of you on the, you know, what the conversation was and what themes came out of that meeting, but we do believe some, in most cases, it's, it's not particularly to Montomeda, it's, people are more free to, to speak if, um, the board is not present.
And thank you very much for all of that. We'll go into the committee and subcommittee for the work that you've done to move this forward.
I would just make a couple other comments. We're, we're, uh, we don't have a specific date for putting a posting out, but it'll probably go out before we've finished all this work, just because we want to get word out there. I think, you know, at, anytime there's a resignation, retirement that's published in the MSBA newscaster, um, there's conversation going on already out there in the education community that this position is open, but we want to formalize it out there, even perhaps before we get this final characteristic demographic makeup of the district. Um, and I would just pass this around, uh, for an example, we're, we're, we're starting this already, this is a recent flyer that we did for a Met Council position that we just, uh, our search firm worked on, and we'll be developing a similar document for the Montomeda Schools in this position. They always vary a little bit on what's emphasized and what's not, but it gives you a sense of the type of document that we put out, and just wanted to show that to you, so you see the type of work that we're doing and on your behalf.
Anything about future communication with the whole board, though, will you be attending board meetings from here on out to give updates? How is that handled?
Yeah, once we develop a final timeline, because it's still in flux, we wanted to get these community dates set and some of those things, yeah, we will be looking at how those dates, and they'll be mirroring board meeting schedules to some degree. As we get down to finalists and interviews, obviously, we're going to have to select additional dates. So once we get that in place, we'll-
The Senate.
Yep, and, and know better if we're going to be at every meeting from here on out. So I, I don't want to speak to that, but you're going to be seeing a lot of us. We're all good in our firm. Thank you, that reminds me, there, I, we had one more item here on, uh, the last page, just contacts, so if, if there's a communication that comes out and say, I don't recognize Heather Seaburn, she's one of our support staff in the office who, who may be compiling some of these characteristics, and you might get an email or something from her, we just wanted to make you aware of the people that are involved in the search from our perspective, so you're not surprised if you get an email.
You know, I, I'm looking just briefly at this flyer. I like some of the comments here on the candidate profile that might be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, it might be very similar when we're all done in some of those places. Yeah, just an example, and we typically follow that format, and obviously content changes by the position.
Is there anything else?
Well, I have another topic.
Well, I just, Chair, Chair Schwartz, I want to talk to you before you leave tonight about meeting night. Kevin is meeting tomorrow with Patty, and I think you've communicated you're available in the same call, and I'm available tomorrow, please, we just need a fill of time, and permanent.
We have an email from a community member about student walkouts. We have a number of planned student walkouts at, um, at the national level around school violence. Um, I know some of our high schools are thinking about walking out, and I know White Bear has posted a policy on their website, and so, and that, I don't know where we are, I don't know what we're thinking, I don't know if we need policy, it's all last minute, um, but I'm just putting it out there.
Couple, couple things, yes, there has been a lot of that. The first date proposed is spring, on spring break, so.
Oh, wow. Oh, yes, it is. And one's a Saturday, I know that.
Yep, but the MSBA also released today, did you see that? So I saw the White Bear one, the MSBA sent it out, but it might be just something to, to look at.
So a communication, if needed.
We want to encourage students to exercise their leadership and their rights to examine important issues, and we want that to be done with parameters.
Anything else? Questions for jury?
Uh, so.
Okay. I think Kevin did.